Good evening. The time is now 5:09 PM. The Warwick Finance Committee is now open. May I have a motion to accept the minutes for the committee meeting held May 6?
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now on to PCR 52-24 Resolution Relative to Bids. May I have an acceptance for the minutes on the bid package committee meeting held on May 6?
Move acceptance?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number one is bid 2024-341 Traffic Safety Camera Program. Per request of the administration as well as the council, we respectfully request that a motion be made to hold until June 17, 2024. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Councilman, you need a PCR on that.
Thank you. May I have a PCR?
It's PCR 5524.
Is it 5524?
5524.
Thank you. Yeah, so I will do another vote just for clarity of the record.
I move to hold PCR 5524.
Second.
Until June 17, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two is bid 2024-418 Warwick Lead Service Line Replacements. Good afternoon, Director. If you could identify?
Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Terry D. Petrello, Chief of Water. So the EPA has required all cities and towns throughout the United States to replace lead services by 2024, October 2024. If not, we have to supply these homes with whole house filters. We're fortunate enough that we only have roughly, give or take, 200 that we identified. We didn't order them.
I'm gonna ask you just to speak up, Director. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So we have roughly around 200 to 224 lead services left in the city. We've been very proactive over the years replacing them. So we took money out of reserves to put out a bid to replace every lead service from the water main to the water meter at no cost to the homeowner. We recommended Ferrari Construction that came in the lowest qualified bidder, $1.5 million. We had four bidders altogether. Ferrari was the cheapest at $1.5 million.
Thank you. And what is the budgetary line item this is coming out of again, please?
This is gonna come out of 84-720 Water Main Maintenance, I believe it is.
Say again?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is actually a new budget code that we put in this history of the budget. 84-720.
And what makes it new? What is it identified as, please?
I believe it's lead service replacement.
Say that again?
Lead service replacement.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Bid 2023-427 Lincoln Avenue Pipeline Rehabilitation, contract number one. Welcome back, Director. Just please identify for the record.
Terry D. Petrello, Chief of Water.
You have the floor.
So this is bid 446, correct? 2024-46?
This is bid 427 Lincoln Avenue Pipeline Rehabilitation.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so this is a change order. So this project, we have phase one and phase two. We got a federal grant of $4 million with a 20% match from the city. Originally, phase one was going from the Patuxent River to the Lincoln Ave Salt Shed, the state salt shed in Jefferson Boulevard. But as the company mobilized and started doing their work, they started at Jefferson Boulevard going towards the river. So as this project went on, we didn't have any accurate records of when this pipeline was put in. We estimated around 1959, just before the highway was put in. But as we were doing construction, we unearthed some of the pipe, and it was stamped "Made in France, 1928." So that's the reason why the pipe broke, because it was 100 years old. So as we're at the salt shed, the biggest part of this is we have lines running on the Route 95, the exit ramps, 95 north and south, and Route 37 east and west. So I got together with the engineers and the contractor. I said, "How much would the city save if we went from the salt shed to Lincoln Avenue on Route 37 while you're already mobilized here?" They came up with an estimate between mobilization, demobilization, and we can skip an engineering study, and environmental permits, anywhere between 100 and 250. So we're talking at least $100,000 savings. My biggest thing was our main objective is to get these pipelines, because the pipes are so old on the highways, completely restored. So the change order is for 600 to 6,000, and that will take care of from the Patuxent River all the way to Lincoln Avenue. And we don't have to worry about the safety of travelers on the highways.
Thank you. And as you said, this contract, including the savings, comes from a portion of the $4 million state grant?
Federal grant, correct.
Federal grant, sorry. Thank you. So this is not something where we have to put ARPA money into. This is pure 100% grant?
Correct.
Thank you so much. Councilman Foley?
As per our earlier conversation, just clarifying and point of emphasis, once you dug this up, you realize those pipes are 1928, correct?
Correct.
So coming on 100 years old.
Right.
Were they to fail, where they go under the highway, the 37 on and off ramps, there could be a catastrophic failure in the sense that that could just open up the grounds in front of a vehicle.
Yeah, but it would be catastrophic. You're talking a 30-inch pipe at 70 PSI that would wipe out the highway and it just, it's, yeah, wouldn't be good.
So this sounds like the most prudent way to go about this project. And in addition, there's a financial savings.
Correct. So our first thing is safety, obviously. But then nominally, we would be saving money, taking that money from phase two while they're already mobilized. It's gonna save the city anywhere from $100,000 to $250,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further questions for members of the council? Councilman Lattisor?
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Director.
Hello.
So sometimes with a change order of this size, it's always concerning. But the size sometimes makes it even more concerning until I get all the information and the facts. And you've recently updated me with a lot of information about this, such as what you just alluded to this evening. And I certainly understand, and it's easy for me to rationalize what the savings are, particularly with, you know, this is already mobile. It's already ongoing. To let them pull out and come back in six months from now or a year from now and have to remobilize all over this entire team, that's extremely expensive. And it's just nonproductive when you have another option. And as I look at this, you've presented another option. But especially important is the reasoning for doing it now. And that reasoning that you've expressed was just... I got reassurance the other day in listening to the news where, and I forget what the community was, but they just had a catastrophic failure.
Atlanta.
Of their water infant. Where is it?
Atlanta.
I think that is it. And this could literally shut down, if not that entire state, a good portion of it. That is a huge, huge issue when we can do something about it right now. So with that said, I will be supporting this change order.
Thank you.
Typically, that's not the road that I go on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further questions, comments for members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you, Director. Next will be bid 2024-470 Purchase of Backhoe, Skid Steer, and Mini Excavator. Good evening, Purchasing Director. How are you?
Good evening. Kristy Moretti, Business Manager, Public Works. Public Works is requesting to purchase a backhoe, skid steer, and mini excavator for from Southworth, Milton, otherwise known as Milton Cat, in the amount of $338,326.76. And this is under a Sourcewell contract, which is a government contract platform.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from members of this committee? Councilman Gebhardt?
Hi, Kristy.
Hi.
Are these in, are these part of the capital budget?
They're actually coming from Waters Capital Fund, Capital Improvement Budget Code. So what is going to happen is that Waters is gonna get new equipment, and they are gonna give their older equipment to Highway. Right now, Highway does not have a backhoe or a skid steer that runs at all. And obviously, important pieces of equipment for that department. And just the other day, the Highway chief, they were working down at the City Park Beach because it had eroded and there were some issues down there from the storms over the winter and needed a mini excavator. Waters is the only one that has one. And if they're using it, then Highway can't use it. So it makes sense to get the package. So Waters will have the new equipment, and they'll give the older equipment to Highway. It's still functional, but it makes sense for Waters to have the new equipment only because of the nature of what they do.
Okay, got it. Yeah, no, that makes sense. I'm just trying to locate these pieces of equipment. Would this be on the 24 capital budget or the 25?
So it's just, it's coming out, it's not, you won't find it listed anywhere. It's coming out of 84-799, which is a line item in the Water Department, one of their operating budget line items.
Okay. Was this a, were these a recent decision? Because usually we get indication on when equipment's being purchased in the capital.
There was discussion between Waters and Highway and the needs for equipment. And Highway doesn't have any, I mean, other than front-end loaders, which are the largest machines we have, we don't have any smaller equipment that runs to do any of the smaller jobs that we need to do. So Waters, like I said, is gonna get the new Milton Cat equipment, and then they'll give their smaller equipment to Highway. So both departments have the equipment they need to do the jobs.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Kristy.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any questions for members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you. The next item is the purchase of One Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper. That is found on page 27. It is bid 2024-471. Good evening.
Kristy Moretti, Public Works. The Public Works Department is requesting to purchase one street sweeper. This was approved in ARPA funding in the amount of $294,005 from CN Wood.
Thank you. I will say on the record that I have wonderful neighbors. And one of my neighbors, there are two pet peeves that he has, and he's one of the oldest homeowners in the area, is when Cedar Swamp floods quite a bit, and so, you know, because the water just kind of piles up and in certain areas always seem to rip up. And the other thing is, is that the street sweepers, they go through once, and he feels there ought to be more street sweeping done in the city because sometimes he'll go down this street. And those are the two things that I hear him yearly and even quarterly, sometimes, you know, bi-yearly, complain about. And that has been his consistent conversation. So seeing this on, that we're doing this, I'm very appreciative. With that said, I was very fortunate when I was doing my research to talk to one of your mechanics, and I am sorry I mentioned this because I forgot his name. First of all, he was extremely polite. He was extremely professional and very knowledgeable. And the gentleman explained to me that the street sweeper's average life is, and correct me if I misunderstood, seven years. And we've had the current street sweeper that we're using for 12 or 14?
The newest one we have is a 2016.
Okay.
The next one that we have, I believe, is a 2006, maybe? And then we have one that is a 1999 that is just inoperable.
And he explained to me their job is to sweep up and to spray. So they just, they take garbage and mud and dirt and water, and somehow we keep them going. So when he explained, because I did ask him, and he brought it up, and very knowledgeable gentleman, he was actually taking care of one of the vehicles, our oldest sanitation vehicle. And he was fixing it up while the workers were still out collecting. So I have to say, he had the data. He had the numbers. I hit him with the questions. It wasn't a planned appointment. And he explained a lot that I didn't know. So, you know, to the director and to yourself, I just wanted to say, he knows the equipment.
Yes.
And for that to last as long as it has, 18 years, is quite astonishing.
We do have an amazing crew in the On-Motor Division.
Thank you.
They keep stuff running like you'd think that it shouldn't be, but...
Right. Well, direct services to the citizens, that's the one that council has, right?
Yes. Well, if they don't work, then nobody else does, so...
That's right. That's true. That's true. Questions from members of the council? Oh, committee, I'm sorry. Members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is bid 2025-053. This is under MIS, found on page 30, Munis Support and Update Licensing. Director?
Phil Carlucci, IT Director. This is a request under City Ordinance 566, exception to bid to award the Munis Software Maintenance Contract to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $260,612.84. It represents an approximate 4% increase over what we hit last year, which fits the normal or typical, I guess is a better word, for an increase. Other than the cost, there's nothing really remarkable about this that we go through every year. But I will, at the chance of sounding like a broken record, take the opportunity to remind everyone, at the latest Tyler Conference for Munis, they estimated two more years that they will be supporting on-premise software usage like we have. After that, they will only be offering a cloud solution, which is a sizable increase in cost over what we're paying right now. There are benefits to it, obviously disaster recovery and the hardware that goes with it and the software support. But net-net, it's gonna be an increase in cost probably in the next two years.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Gebhardt?
When it comes, I don't know, when it comes time where we'll need to migrate to a cloud solution, will we, would we still be, would Tyler be our only option? Or would we have alternative options at that time?
There are always alternative options. They are not the only ones who produce the software. The issue we run into is twofold. Number one, in all honesty, they're embedded. These are the processes we know. These are the processes, these are the software processes we understand. And any migration, migrating from one version to the next of the Tyler product is a significant undertaking for the city. Multiply that times 10 if you're actually going from one package to the other. The other issue, besides the fact that it would be a fairly monumental change, is there is no one sitting there saying, "Oh, well, we're offering this cheap alternative." Cloud, SaaS, Software as a Service, is just the standard anymore. For those who, in our parlance, bought the software, pay a maintenance charge each year just to maintain it and get new versions and new upgrades and security patches and everything, and run it on your own hardware, there are very few software companies that are offering that anymore. So I would not, they're not listening, I'm sure. I would not tell Tyler that there are no alternatives. We're certainly, when we hit that point, going to look at all options and try to entice them. I have seen from some other software vendors, enticements, financial enticements, one we'll be talking about, I think, at the next meeting, where they're saying, "We want you on the cloud so badly, we're gonna discount this significantly." I'm kind of hoping that Tyler will get to that point when the need comes.
So reading between the lines, are you suggesting that in the next two years we would put out an RFP for the, this, you know, city ERP?
I would definitely put one out. I don't think, for this kind of money, I don't think it would make sense not to.
Yeah.
I just think we would have to weigh, it could not be a cost decision on cost of ongoing software. It would have to be a cost decision on cost change associated with it.
Yep. Yeah. It'd be interesting to know feedback, like going from Munis on-prem to Munis Cloud, is that effectively a new implement, you know, a brand-new system anyways? And so do you already have some of that change risk built into that transition, which might make it an opportune time to make maybe a bigger change? Or not, but at least to keep Tyler honest and make, you know, it's an important piece, but obviously it's probably the biggest part of your budget.
It is. And you're absolutely right. It would be a migration. And we'd have to see what that migration is gonna cost us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Further questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
The next bid is 2022-021 Assessors Parcel and Zoning Layer Maintenance, Web GIS Application. This is found on page 36. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Gigan, Deputy Director, Planning. The planning and the assessing departments are requesting to enter into a contract amendment with the existing vendor for RFP 2022-21 Parcel and Zoning Layer Maintenance and Web GIS Application, which was awarded to CAI Technologies on May 20, 2021. The amendment being proposed would allow the city to cap the annual cost at the existing rate of $13,000 per year for an additional five-year period for a total expenditure of $65,000 over that period. This would be funded through Budget Code 25-360, which is in the MIS Department. And basically, the GIS is what is widely used by city staff, realtors, developers. It's, we take the parcels, we overlay them on aerial zoning, flood mapping. It's a great tool, and for the cost, it's an outstanding return for the city.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions, comments from members of this committee? Councilman Gebhardt?
Just, hi, thank you for coming. Just looking at the difference in price from AppGeo, are there, are there like feature differences between the two platforms, or is it just...
They're very similar platforms. We started with a group called Main Street GIS many years ago. They built our system, and then they were purchased and bought out by CAI Technologies. So it's really, there's a huge cost in the setup of this. We benefited from Main Street, who, they were a small outfit, and their pricing was really, really good originally. So that is sort of an advantage for the current vendor.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Deputy Director.
Good evening, Councilman.
So this GIS program, which as you recall, I'm sure, I was probably one of the original proponents of implementing this program and for a lot of the reasons, actually all the reasons you said, in addition to a lot more. This program has helped each of us here on the city council. I know it's helped me on a lot more than one occasion in trying to get information to our constituents where, prior to having this program, it might take days or weeks to get this information. And it may not always be as accurate as one would hope. And if I recall, prior to this program, we actually had to have an employee manually doing these maps and manually doing these theories and measurements, et cetera, right?
That's correct. They were, the maps were hand-drawn twice a year. First, there's a draft, and then a final map. And that was a full-time position.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
And this tool averages us how much a year?
It's capped at $13,000.
$13,000 a year. And it's precise. And I believe in our conversation earlier, you had indicated that they are holding the pre-COVID costs for three years in a minimum increase for two additional years?
That's correct. In the final two years, it would go up by $900.
Each year?
For each of those years.
$900 for each year?
Correct.
Or for the both years?
Actually, it was $800, I'm sorry.
Yeah. $800 for two, so it's $400 a year?
$800 each year, so $1,600 total.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be bid 2024-472 Water Purchase of One EV 150 Vacuum Excavator. This is found on page 44. Welcome back, Director.
Good evening, Terry D. Petrello, Chief of Water. So the Water Division put a request out to purchase Vermeer All Roads EV 150 Vacuum. What the vacuum does is it assists with emergencies. As you know, with sand and salt, get inside our gate valve boxes. And sometimes to prevent more road damage or property damage, it's, we need that vacuum air on site to vacuum out that all quick and shut the valve down. Also, what it has is a flow master on this also. So we have some valves in the city that take 300 turns to shut off. And it takes four to six guys to shut these valves off, which is very time-consuming. So that Lincoln Ave project that we discussed earlier with that change order, that main line was 309 turns. It took us two hours to shut off. We lost 50 million gallons of water because our vacuum was not working at the time. The current vacuum we have now was not the proper one. They bought it probably 15 years ago. And it's not commercial-grade. And it just, it ended up, the motor ended up dying. And just to replace the motor on that is gonna be close to $10,000. We bought the unit for $25,000. So under the Sourcewell government contract, we found it's Vermeer that would work fantastic for the use. It also does trenchless excavation. So we can go into your yard, and we don't have to use a backhoe in certain instances, and we could just use the vacuum also on the road. It's very handy. It's a critical piece of equipment that we use. Just like the sewer department, they have that big vac truck, which is, which is critical to, you know, their operation. So the price, and it's just gonna go on, one-time purchase of $58,000 under Budget Code 84-799.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Are there any questions? Are there any questions from members of the council? Are there any questions from members of the public? Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
We have now come to the threshold, where I will go and ask members of this committee, the council president, then the council, then the public, if they have any items they would like to call for discussion. I will just start quickly. I would like to discuss item number 19, found on page 89, bid 2024-467, removal and replacement of retaining wall at Sand Pond. Are there any items that members of this committee would like to discuss? Well, Councilman Gebhardt reviews. Council President McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one, item number 30, on page 121, um, the DPW purchase of park benches.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council President requests bid 2024-478, purchase of four compliant park benches, on page 121, that is item number 30. Will do. Are there any items that members of the council would like to discuss? Councilwoman Travis would like to discuss item number 11, bid 2024-292, the planning of the city park, Dog Park Improvement Program, found on page 58. Are there any items that members of the... Councilman Lattesor.
Thank you, Chairman. Item number 10, found on page 56, vehicle exhaust removal system maintenance.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lattesor requests bid 2025-032, Warwick Fire Department Vehicle Exhaust Removal System Maintenance, found on page 56. Are there any other members of the council that would like to discuss items in the packet? You're still good. Are there any items that members of the public would like to discuss? I will stand on hold while, um, members of the council and committee continue just to review the packets quick. All set? Thank you. So no more further calls, we will now go in order as they were requested. So we will start with item number 10. This was requested by Councilman Lattesor. This is bid 2025-032, the Warwick Fire Department Vehicle Exhaust Removal System Maintenance. This is found on page 56. Good evening, Chief. Please identify.
Good evening, Assistant Chief Upton Howard from the Fire Department.
Councilman Lattesor.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Uh, yeah, just a little with thank yous tonight, I guess. Chief, I just want to be sure to put it on the record that the staff that will be doing whatever is necessary to do on here, they're all certified and licensed accordingly in Rhode Island, et cetera.
Correct. For this bid, all the staff that do the work are licensed by the state and they follow the prevailing wage laws.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Are there any questions from members of the committee on item number 10? Questions, comments from members of the council on item number 10? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you, Chief. The next item is bid 2024-292, planning city park, Dog Park Improvement Program. This is found on page 58. I see our planning director come down. Councilwoman Travis, once the council, the planning director identifies, you have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Director.
Hi, good evening, Tom Kravitz, City Planning Director.
Um, I went by and I seen, they're doing a great job. I seen the paving and, you know, the marking on the paving, and it's a lot bigger, we went into the woods. Um, do we have an idea when it would be finished? I have people ask me that all the time.
Uh, I just talked to Dean today about that, and it's very close to being finished. 90% I think, complete, he said. So I can, I can get you an exact date tomorrow from him.
Sure. That's good. At least I've got something to tell them, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, they're doing a great job.
Yep. A lot of credit goes to Dean for this project. He does great work for the city, you know, designing this stuff before it goes out to bid, so, very talented guy.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments, questions for members of this committee? Further comments, questions from members of the council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Thank you, Director. The next item is item number 19, bid 2024-467, DPW, removal and replacement of retaining wall at Sand Pond. This is found on page 89. Hi, Kristy. Kristy, since I called this, do you mind if I just do a quick opening?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. So when we, as a council, when we found out, I've been working with the Sand Pond for many years, they are a very well-organized organization, a group of neighbors who truly care, and I, I'm so proud that they brag that it, this Sand Pond that is in the city of Warwick is the, in the top 10 of cleanest and clearest ponds in the Northeast Region, is here in the city of Warwick, in the community of Sand Pond. So when we found out we had the ARPA money, there was discussion where I went to Sand Pond and asked them what's something we could do, and they got together in true Sand Pond fashion and came up with a plan to rehabilitate a portion of the Sand Pond that was already there, but it was over 50 years old and it was weather-worn. So with all credit, we, we worked together as a team and came up with, and also, I want to identify DBW, Director Eric Earls, his team, planning, Director Kravitz and his team, that we also, and also, I have to accredit Bill Facente, who would give us such valuable advice when it came to addressing this, and then finally, of course, our purchase and director who guided us through this program. This was something that, a real strong, but yet difficult undertaking, because we're dealing with a water, an environmental, a strong environmental cleanup that we noticed is a maintenance, and we got approval from DEM through the city, and I gotta thank Mayor Pacozzi and his staff, um, to make this area, revitalize it, so once again, more welcoming to the citizens of Warwick to use this area. So the plans were put forward, they were reviewed, a lot of time and skill was put into this, and the winning bid was put out within the bid, there was an understanding that there's a narrow path that has to go. So Kristy, the winning bidder, as it was mentioned in the bid specs, they understand the path must be used to bring the materials to the pond.
Yes.
Thank you. And also, the entire wall, the long wall, the entire section of the wall has to be replaced, as mentioned in the specs.
Yes.
Thank you. I can't tell you how excited we are that this is, this is happening, coming to fruition, and I gotta say, I'm very proud that, with my colleagues and all your support, and the fact that the council president, the mayor, and his administration were able to give us this ARPA money and use it for what it's intended for, and that is infrastructure, and this is definitely part of it. So, um, I'll leave it at that. Are there any questions, comments from members of the committee? Any questions, comments from members of the council?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to, uh, voice my complete agreement with you that this is money well-spent, a true neighborhood gem. It's wonderful to see investments going back into Sand Pond to maintain something that's enjoyed by so many neighbors, both in Ward 3 and, if I may also say, in Ward 2. And I'd also like to agree with you in extending thanks to the administration for their wisdom in, in the process with the Ward ARPA funds, so that investments like this can be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and I'm not correcting you, I'm adding, they host, just for the record, this Sand Pond Organization hosts two annual events. One is the Spooky Pond, which is open to all residents of Warwick, and we, we have residents of, non-residents of Warwick that participate, and they also host Pondapalooza, where they welcome citizens to come over and enjoy an afternoon and a day, and to be introduced to Sand Ponds. Uh, I'm happy to say that our finance director, uh, purchasing director, I apologize, recently was, explained to that, and I think she said she's gonna make an effort to go by and check that area out. They're very welcoming, they're very welcoming and very proud, which makes this, this a very easy project to do. Thank you, Councilman, for the entire city to enjoy. Are there any questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Mr. Bouchard, one of the original Sand Pond posse? Go ahead and, there you go. Phil's just gonna make sure the microphone's on, and then just please identify when he
Okay, thank you. So my name is Dave Bouchard. I reside at 173 Puritan Drive, and my home abuts the public right away in this very unique setting, this 500-foot path that leads from Sand Pond down to where the beach is. So my wife and I moved there 52 years ago as our starter home. For two years, we were gonna live there, and now we're there 52 years, we've seen a lot of things happen. One thing that hasn't changed is the retaining wall. The retaining wall was there when we arrived 52 years ago. It was done basically by the community. They scavenger together railroad ties, telephone poles, steel pipes, and they built this retaining wall, the men of the community. And the ladies were there, I'm sure, providing refreshments for the hard work that was done. So it's been there for at least 52 years, uh, and over the years, it has, um, like many of us, suffered the results of time and starting to fall apart somewhat quite a bit of late, and, um, so we approached Councilman How, as a matter of fact, used this opportunity. Tim mentioned that he's probably not gonna run for reelection, he's been at this for eight years, and the first two years were a real learning curve. It was for him, and it was for me. Tim and I had a lot of very interesting discussions, so much so that, uh, Tim was, uh, he came after me, I was enlisted reserve, and some years later, he was regular army. But, um, some of our discussions became so passionate that we had a password, that if things got a little too hot and heavy, Tim could use this password, and he'd shut me down, and he did, a couple of times. But, uh, in the process of things, the, uh, we've always, the community has always tried to work with the city. One really good example was removing trash from around the beach, and, um, because of the condition of the path and the retaining wall, it was difficult for some of the employees of the city to get down to actually the beach area and remove the trash. So we collected, and we met with Tim, Tim was actually in my backyard, it was in COVID, it was, um, Mayor Solomon was the mayor at the time, and we devised a plan, working with the city, that we could get a container down there, and the community would take the responsibility, work closely to get the rubbish up to the street so it could be taken away. That's worked really well, and one of the employees of the Department of Public Works, Paul Jutris, is the guy who, who makes it work. He's, he's just a great city employee. Anytime he knows we're gonna have Pondapalooza or one of our other events, or it's 4th of July, uh, Paul will either get ahead of the game and get the rubbish out of there, or we just give him a call, work together, keep the place clean, keep it open. So we were very encouraged when, uh, Tim was willing to work on this next step of, uh, using some of the ARPA money to replace the, the retaining wall. And we're very fortunate that we have, uh, in the community, we have, one of the people is a registered professional engineer, civil engineer, uh, works for the Department of Transportation for the state of Rhode Island, and she was instrumental in completing the application, which was needed to do this, um, replacement of the retaining wall. And that was successful with, uh, Mayor Pacozzi signed it, sent the application to DEM, and they've given us the opportunity to do this without getting a, a new permit. So with that said, we, as Tim just mentioned, and it was affirmed, one of our central issues was that we wanted all of the railroad ties and all of the creosote-soaked telephone poles to be removed. There was a little confusion about that, because in fairness to DPW, they had identified some on the western end of the beach that were still pretty solid, but we're happy to hear that we're all, once again, on the same page, and that the work down there will complete, uh, will include taking all, all the ties out of there, and we won't have to go back to DEM. So we're, uh, the community's very pleased, very, um, comfortable working with Tim and the other people in, uh, um, the purchasing department, and of course, Joanne, uh, who's the clerk for the council. So we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dave. And if I may say, Mr. Bouchard, the DBW director is right over there in the purple shirt, if you wanna give some props out to the gentleman who works with your department. Are there any further questions from members of the council? Oh, I'm sorry, members of the public? I apologize. Thank you so much. Thank you. The last item is item number 30, bid 2024-478, DBW purchase of four ADA compliant bench, uh, park benches. This is found on page 121. Council President McAllister, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Kristy. Uh, no questions, I just wanted to point out these as part of the ARPA funds. Um, one is gonna go at Gordon's Pond, um, by the fishing pier, in a nice sitting area there. DEM stocked the pond, um, this spring for the first time in a number of years, so it's a very busy spot, and, uh, people are really enjoying it, so this will add to that area. And the other two are gonna go down in Arnold's Neck, and, uh, we just opened up a brand-new swing set, uh, down there, right on the water, absolutely beautiful, replaced an old rundown playground, we took it out, uh, put up this brand-new, um, swing set, um, that just, they finished the work last week, also an ARPA project that the council voted for, so thank you very much. So I just wanted to point out, uh, those two things, they're gonna be adding to, uh, two gorgeous areas in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Questions from, comments from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Hearing none. May I have a motion for acceptance of the full consent calendar of PCR 52-24?
Uh, move favorable action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. The next will be PCR 37-24, a resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreement between the city of Warwick and the Warwick Lodge, number seven, Fraternal Order of Police, to add the Juneteenth holiday to the roster of paid holidays in the collective bargaining agreement. Council President.
Thank you. I ducked this on behalf of the mayor, and I believe the Chief of Staff is here to speak on it.
Thank you. Chief, please identify.
Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Macacy, Mayor's Chief of Staff, if it's fine with yourself and the committee, I'd just like to speak broadly on the three PCRs that are before the committee tonight, which all have the same effect.
Absolutely. So the statement you're gonna make applies to all three, but I will not call on you to make the statement unless there's specific questions to each one. Understood. Thank you, Chief. Please, continue.
Thank you, Sue. As the, uh, as the PCRs indicate, uh, these would add a new holiday for city employees on Juneteenth. The holiday commemorates the day when news of the Emancipation Proclamation reached the furthest distance south in which individuals were enslaved by the Confederacy. It was made a national holiday by President Biden back in 2021, became a state holiday this past year with the signature of Governor McKee. It'll be celebrated by the state for the first time this year in 2024. Uh, this action is desired by the administration. This action is desired by the administration to bring us into parity with the state's action. The action that this General Assembly and the governor took left it to each of the 39 municipalities to decide for ourselves how to move forward on Juneteenth, of whether recognizing it as a holiday for employees or not. Warwick has chosen to take this action. Oh, we're sorry if I might note, you are in receipt of a fiscal note from Finance Director Schaefer, which bears out the cost of this holiday.
Yes, thank you so much. Questions for members of this committee? Councilman Gebhardt.
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Councilman.
Thank you for sharing the fiscal note and the background here. Was, was any consideration given to subbing out a different existing holiday rather than expanding the holiday schedule for all municipal employees?
To the best of my recollection, no, Councilman.
Okay. Are you aware, have any other, are you aware of what other municipalities have adopted the broad additional paid holiday for all employees?
Yes, I know that the City of Providence has adopted this as an additional paid holiday for their municipal employees.
Okay. And do you know, did this come up in any collective bargaining work that has been ongoing or is already closed?
That I really can't comment on, excuse me, comment on, Councilman. It wouldn't be proper to discuss conversations in, conversations with the bargaining units.
Okay.
But suffice to say that this is being, an action we're requesting to take outside of a regular ratification of the contract.
Yeah, no, I have absolutely no issue with, with, you know, observing Juneteenth, celebrating Juneteenth. I'm just, in, you know, obviously, I work in the private sector, and so we removed an existing holiday in order to make this a new one, so as to not take on the added cost and burden of yet another paid holiday. But, okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any questions, comments from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Councilman.
Chief, in this fiscal note, it states that there's an expense of $55,000, $55,000 if this is approved for retirees. Could you explain how, assuming I'm reading this properly, how retirees get holiday pay?
Certainly. So retirees per the contracts with the three collective bargaining units, they qualify for holiday pay under the same contract, excuse me, under the same language as active employees. So the same, to provide an example, a firefighter on ladder one gets paid for a holiday. A retiree who's my grandfather's age will receive that same holiday pay in their retirement check. It's a stipulation of the contract. So if a holiday is added to the list of holidays for active members, it has to be added for retirees as well. There's no way around that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gebhardt.
Pardon me, just a clarification from the Finance Director, just for fire and police one. So that's police officers hired before February of 1971, and firefighters hired before May of 1992.
So what I'm going to do is, since he just followed up, Councilman, you're still good with the answer? Thank you. Councilman Gebhardt.
Helpful clarification, thank you. Do we have a list, sorry to give you this on the spot, do we have a list of all the paid holidays for city employees today?
Not, not currently on me, Councilman, but I'd be happy to provide that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Foley.
Just clarification. So the way I'm reading this is contracts prior to 1971, and then contracts prior to 1992 had this provision in them, and those retirees who were under those contracts, some 50 years old, are the ones receiving that benefit, not all retirees.
Correct, Councilman. It covers 237 beneficiaries.
Just making a point, you know, clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Please, yes, please.
Hi, Ann Sheridan. Just to follow up with something on Councilman Gebhardt, do we know how many paid holidays the union representatives, union members have?
Sure, Sue, just a note on that, it does cover all city employees, although it is in the collective bargaining agreements for the union. Personally, I, accurate number can't come to mind right now. I'm trying to think of the holidays that I get off for the, for the annual calendar, but I'd be happy to take a moment and just check on one of my devices or ask a colleague.
So who?
I'm sorry, I believe the answer that you gave before, and just for the record, that you told the Councilman you'd get him that information, so would it be accurate? Or did I misunderstand that?
Correct.
Oh, okay, thank you. Please, continue.
No, I understood that. I just thought maybe he didn't know the days, but might know the number. I mean, pretty typically, people know whether you get 10, 12, 15.
Understood.
So if I could just, my question is, do we know if the number of holidays that the members subject to collective bargaining agreement relate to anything in the public sector, private sector, more private sector?
Pardon me if I, and my apologies, Ms. Sheridan, if you were asking a question, I did miss the end part of that, but we have, not including this action, 13 paid holidays.
13 paid holidays, so.
Correct.
I don't think, I don't think that, and I'll let you answer, but the follow-up question was, well, what are they compared to the private sector? And that would be hard to say, so I'll, because that would be hard for us to say, but, go ahead, Chief.
Sure, that would depend on, depend on the private individual business. Granted, I don't generally think that comparing a public sector employment package to a private sector employment package would be beneficial in that way. There are certain offerings that they offer you in the private sector that are separate from what we offer in the, in the public.
Thank you. But I think that at some point, the city needs to gather itself and to recognize that I, you, are owners of company of some few thousand people that manage to support 70,000 people, and that maybe somewhere down the road, we need to look at the employer-employee relationship. Because most people don't get the benefits that we attribute to our staff. I've worked in private industry, I've worked in public industry, so I come from both, both places. And clearly, when I was a municipal worker, I was treated with benefits that far suppressed any, anything that I could have gotten in public, and I, in private. And the private people that I worked for were Fortune 500 companies, and at the highest level of compensation, but they were shy compared to what I got in municipal. And I think it's going to behoove the next council to look at this with all of, with all of the new contracts coming up, because it's off the subject, but the budget's going to be straining next year with all of the things that we're going to have to come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's, it's a hard, I certainly, for one, know, private sectors don't take Veterans' Day, but I, for one, as a taxpayer, have no problem, or Memorial Day. I, for one, with my personal feeling and experience, have no problem with seeing the private sector get those days off as well, but I know many who don't get those days off. And that's unfortunate in my eyes. But are there any further comments, questions from members of the public? Thank you. May I have a recommendation?
Move favorable action on PCR 37-24.
I don't.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Next is PCR 38-24, resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreement between the City of Warwick and the Rhode Island Council 94, Local 1651 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, the AFL-CIO, to add the Juneteenth holiday to the roster of paid holidays in the collective bargaining agreement. This goes on the exact same discussion that we did on the previous one, so I'll just ask members of the committee, the council, and the public if they have any specific questions that have not been discussed as of yet. Any further questions from members of the council, committee?
No.
Further questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in doing a quick analysis of Councilman Gebhardt's questions, which I think were, were very pointed questions, and doing some quick math regarding this item, so I'm just going to refer to my comments as either 12 or 13 current paid holidays. I thought it was 12, with this being 13, but I could be wrong. So in rationalizing this, and now hearing that it's, could potentially be 14, that's three additional weeks of essentially paid vacation, in addition to the three or four or five weeks, whatever it is, that the staff already gets. When I do the quick math on this, this fiscal report states that if this additional holiday were to be added, it would be $232,455 for this year. Is that correct, Chief?
Correct, Councilman.
Okay. So that doesn't include any raises in the future, it doesn't include increased healthcare costs, and we already know this year, there's a 5%, I believe it was, in the budget, healthcare increase. It doesn't include any of the associated costs with payroll. So based upon $232,455 for this year, we're looking at $3,021,915 for just this year alone, for a total, and I'm basing it on 13 paid holidays if this passes, not 14, based upon 13. Where does this stop? We have $350 million that's coming up for schools. We have all of the other costs associated with operating the city, the contractual requirements, which are not factored into this going forward, et cetera. And I know in my ward, there's a significant amount of people who are just trying to live from paycheck to paycheck. They don't get 14 paid holidays. But yet, they're being asked to pay for another holiday. Where does it stop? And I'm grouping this up as holiday pay, not assigning a name or relevancy to any one of them. I'm talking about it as a business expense. We have 14 days, according to the Chief of Staff, of business expense that have to be borne by the taxpayers. Where do we stop the bleeding? Or when? Thank you.
Council Chairman, if I may.
Chief.
Sure, just to respond to that, Councilman Lattisor, I would say that it stops when the federal government stops declaring additional national holidays. I mean, we're not, the administration's not recommending this just, just on a whim or for a holiday that's not a holiday of significance. I think there are legitimate arguments, which, excuse me, legitimate debates we can have on the rationale for why it's an important national holiday to celebrate at the state, local, and federal level, but when it comes to the, comes to the financing of it, I would just say that there are, there are certain benefits and downsides to being a municipal employee. Sure, one of the benefits is the paid holidays, the family time off, healthcare benefits that members receive. One of the disadvantages oftentimes is the salary. We do have, I mean, if you look at the personnel supplement, those before the council, I mean, the annual salaries of some employees are significantly low to suggest that there might be folks who do live paycheck to paycheck. So I think we just should keep that in mind as well, that these are the folks we're talking about here.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
I, thank you. Yes, Councilman.
So I think that, you know, as a community, we're expected to make our own independent decisions, and it does not necessarily mean that we need to rubber stamp what the federal delegation is proposing a doing. And you brought up a point, and I guess my question would be, if the administration wants to add an additional holiday, and I'll continue to refer to it as the holiday, then why didn't the mayor just do an executive order and make it happen, as opposed to sending this on to the city council to make a decision?
Sure. Well, first, I would note that this is not, this is a recommendation from the administration that this is the direction the city goes in. As you know, I'm not an attorney or a municipal law attorney, so I don't know the legality of whether or not this is in the mayor's scope to declare municipal holiday just by executive order. That would be questioned for this listener's office. But the mayor believes strongly in bringing matters of high concern and importance before the city council, especially if it has a financial impact, which is why we're here tonight with this recommendation, that we go down this path for the additional holiday.
I think we just got done through all this recently, saying that the charter allows the mayor to pretty much do what he wants to do. I think we just got done all of that. But in any event, I think Councilman Gebhardt raised some very important questions. His question, one of them is, so I guess, where are you going to get this money? Tell me. Are you willing to retract a holiday in order to replace it with another one, which, by the way, has been done in the past? The federal government has changed or eliminated one of two holidays and combined them into one, if I recall correctly? So that's my question. Where does the money come from? And this $3 million a year is going to continue to grow, contract after contract after contract. Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Gebhardt, for your questions.
But to answer the question, the $229,575 would be borne by the budget, just like any cost that arises during, additional cost that arises during a fiscal year. And as to these adding year after year, obviously, I've been with the city for the length of the Pacozzi administration, to my knowledge, this is the first time that the administration has moved to add an additional holiday as part of either the contract process or outside the contract process.
It increases, it increases the cost to the taxpayers, Chief. You can color it any way you want.
I'm not arguing otherwise, Councilman.
But it increases the cost. If this were to pass, if these items were to pass, I can assure you that I will be doing my best to make any cuts and all cuts that I can going forward to offset this cost on the back of the taxpayers. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and I have another request from Councilman Gebhardt. Thank you, and I have another request from Councilman Gebhardt. A charter can give a mayor, I just want to put my two cents in on one thing, a charter, the mayor does have the power in the charter, but I think this is the right way to go because if we all remember, that is what the mayor has led by example on many occasions, where he's, could have made a decision by the stroke of a pen and used government as it was meant, brought it to another, brought it to the legislative body, the other body of the government. And secondly, because it's contractual, it would be, to me, no difference than, no different, which is what we are doing. We are adding an amendment to a contract which requires, otherwise we'll be running into another scenario of why didn't this come before the council? So I'd like just to clear that up, but Councilman Gebhardt.
Just the last one. Chief, you made a comment earlier about, your councilman said, "When does this stop?" And you said, "When the federal government stops declaring federal holidays." Just something to look at is that there are a number of holidays on our list already which are not federal holidays. So, you know, back to, I didn't elaborate on my initial point of the example of my company, where we felt it was important to honor and celebrate Juneteenth and to make that a paid day off for our employees. However, we swapped out a different holiday that was either of less significance or that we did not think was as high a priority as this particular holiday and this day. So, I mean, that to me would be a more appropriate exercise than to add a, I'm not sure, a 14th or a 15th paid day off for employees in the city, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Councilman Ricks.
Thank you, Chairman. I think that you, Chairman, as well as Councilman Gebhardt and Lattisor, all raised very valid points here. I'll just chime in briefly that I was taking a look over the three contracts. Pardon me, I know that we're going through each of these one at a time, but if I may, the contract for the police department provides for 14 paid holidays. I see that most of them are federal holidays, but I do notice that on the list in the current contract is Lincoln's birthday and Washington's birthday, which each used to be, I believe, federal holidays, but were consolidated into President's Day. For the local AFL-CIO affiliate, I see that there are also 14 paid holidays. Actually, not necessarily 14 in any given year, because Election Day counts as one of those, as well as a half-day on Christmas Eve. So, on average, I suppose, 13 paid holidays. And among them include some non-federal holidays, as well as, there is President's Day, as opposed to two separate days of Lincoln, Washington's birthday. And then, for the local 2748, our firefighters, I see that there are eight paid holidays. So, based on how each of the holidays are listed out in each of the separate contracts, and the contracts are not specifically stating that everyone gets every federal holiday, I don't think that this would be just a matter of cleaning up the contracts to make sure that everyone is on the same page as to Juneteenth counting as a date that city workers are entitled to receive how they pay. But instead, these resolutions would essentially act as giving away an additional day outside of the usual negotiation collective bargaining process. And I don't think it's appropriate for us to, under all of the circumstances with city finances, simply make a giveaway to city employees outside of that normal collective bargaining process. The city is in some tough financial condition. I think that it is, to echo Councilman Gebhardt, I think it is important that we recognize Juneteenth as a city. I think that it would be a great thing for Juneteenth to be a paid holiday for city employees. But I think it's something that should go through the normal collective bargaining process, and perhaps the best solution here is a one-for-one trade-off with a different holiday. Thank you.
Sure. So, Chairman, if I may. Thank you, Councilman. Chief.
Sure. I would just disagree with the description of the city's financial state, as Director Schaefer and the mayor made clear in the budget message, we're in a strong, uncomfortable financial position regarding the process point. The contracts allow for these type of amendments to be made, and this is the right process to make those amendments outside of the collective bargaining process. As you know, the administration is currently in negotiation with two of the collective bargaining units, not a third. And then I just, I would just disagree with the characterization of this as a giveaway. That's just not our position.
Thank you, Chief.
Chairman? On your left.
Hello, Councilman Sinapi. You'd like to weigh in?
Just to note that, for those who may recall, we've had frequent issues when it comes to the collective bargaining agreements, specifically, like, they have a bunch of names for this particular thing, but like backroom deal, side deal, et cetera, all things that the council was never made aware of, and then the council gets upset. So, let's not forget of that past practice from administrations past, and that this is the opposite and basically what we've always wanted. Regardless of the merits of this particular request, the process that is playing out is what we've professed to want for years, so let's not forget that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions, comments from members of the public? Question, comments from members of the public? Yep.
So, if I, excuse me, it's Ann Sheridan.
Thank you.
If I could follow up on the question from Councilman Ricks. Did you say that the fire department has less vacation days than the police department, than the third union?
Through the chair, if I may.
Thank you, Councilman, yes.
I actually didn't specifically look at vacation days, sick days, anything of that nature. I was, in my very brief review just now, just looking exclusively at the paid holidays and taking a note that the firefighters receive eight paid holidays. I'm seeing them listed in the contract as July 3rd, July 4th, October 31st, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and New Year's Day. And I'm not going to list all of the ones for all of the other departments, but the quick way that they could be looked up is, I'm looking at page 23 of the local Rhode Island Council 94, AFSMI, AFL-CIO, contract, and page 8 of the Warwick Police Contract. And those respectively have 14 paid holidays for our police officers, and on average, as I explained earlier, 13 holidays for the city workers, a local AFSMI affiliate.
Oh my, I would just expect that everyone would be on an equal footing in that, you know, in negotiation, there's firemen or city employees, just as everyone else, and wouldn't everybody get the same number of, I mean, I know they bargain on this, but from the administration's standpoint, you would think that would be a starting point where everybody is treated equally and starts out with the same benefit packs, similar benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from members of the public? Thank you. May I have a recommendation on PCR 38-24?
Recommend favorable action on PCR 38-24.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? One. Thank you. Next is PCR 39-24, Resolution Ratifying the Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Warwick and Local 2748, International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, to add Juneteenth holiday to the roster of paid holidays in the collective bargaining agreement. Are there any questions, comments that have not already been discussed from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council on items that have not already been discussed? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apply all my comments previously to the first issue and this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Duly noted. Are there any comments, questions from members of the public on this item that have not already been discussed? Thank you. May I have a motion?
I move favorable action on PCR 39-24.
I will second it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. The time is now 6:30, and the Warwick Finance Committee's business is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next committee to me is Public Safety, and that can take place at this time.
Well done. Good and noble servant.
You too.
Good evening. The City of Warwick Public Safety Committee comes to order at 6:30. I need one moment, please. First item of business is acceptance of the minutes from committee meeting held on May 6th. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The first claim in front of us, oh, I'm sorry, we're now on to PCR 5324, Resolution Relative to Claims. First item is acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on May 6th. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The first claim in front of us tonight is Sofia DeLuca, and the recommend, all the paperwork is here, they were contacted, the recommendation is to deny, and the reason is paperwork not filed on a timely manner. We have any questions or comments from the committee? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Sofia for attending this evening. We had spoken in advance of this meeting. I had gone over the paperwork and noticed that the notice was, in fact, appeared to have been sent into the finance department on April 16th, that is, within seven days of the date of the incident on April 9th. We can also see that that's evidenced by the fact that the finance paperwork was notarized that same date of April 16th. So I'm not certain exactly why the department was under the impression that it was not reported to the finance department within one week. There's also further evidence in that the AAA records are dated as requested and retrieved April 16th. Those also name the date of the incident as April 9th. And it's my experience that people don't randomly request the AAA records unless they've been told that they need to do that. Also, looking over the claim, it appears to me that all of the paperwork is in order here, including the affidavit and the two additional estimates, each of them being higher than the invoice. And beyond that, I did notice that there was one other comment by the department, that it appeared that the photo was not, in fact, taken on, at Kilford Street. Looking into that a little bit more, it looks like the department may have been looking over into the 300s of Kilford Street. Looks like there was a little bit of a mix-up. The photo of that pothole in question was taken over by the 400s of Kilford Street, and I checked that out myself on Google Maps, and it all lines up. So, as far as my review indicates, it appears that everything is in order, but I would defer to members of the committee.
For the record, I appreciate the effort you've put, and I'm not, I'm being sincere and honest. I appreciate the effort you put in. Before I get to you, Ms., any members of the council? Councilman Lattisor. Excuse me, sir, one second. Any other members of the committee? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question on this issue, but I say, I don't have a question on this issue. I'd just like to make a comment, that I think it would be very important for someone from the Department of Public Works to be here during these claims hearings, so that we can ask questions of them, and they can explain to us what their rationale and reasons are for making the decisions that they make. These claims are a direct reflection from DPW, and I think that they should be in attendance during these claims. Thank you.
Sir, I will gladly reach out to the administration and discuss that with them. All right. Now, could you please identify yourself, and I have a question for you, Sof, I'm assuming Sofia. Okay.
Yes, I'm Sofia DeLuca.
All right. Do you wish to add anything over and above what Councilman Ricks has already testified for you?
No, I think Councilman Ricks covered it, and thank you for doing that for me. I appreciate it.
I'm going to defer to him for a recommendation. Are there any other members of the public to speak on this claim? Hearing none, seeing none. Councilman Ricks, could you please make a motion?
Recommend approve in the amount of $209, excuse me, $209.61.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Now, let me just explain the process to you. We're the committee, we have voted for a recommendation of favorable action. This is going to go to the full council. Usually, they vote with our recommendation, but not every time. So it's up to you whether you'd like to stay and hear the vote or not, but I just wanted you to be aware. Thank you. Thank you, I mean, too. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The second claim in front of us tonight is Roberta Farias, and the recommendation is to deny. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you, Chairman. Looking over this, I do see that the department recommends to deny, similarly, based on the seven-day requirement, or, pardon me, let's make sure that I'm on the correct one.
Farias.
Yes. Oh, thank you. And yes, I see similarly, the department recommends denial based on the seven days. However, I see that the date of incident is reported as March 8th. I see that there's an indication by the claimant that notice was given on March 9th, the following date, and similarly to the last item, I see that AAA records were retrieved on March 11th, reflecting that AAA was out there on March 8th. Typically, people don't go and retrieve these records from AAA unless they're told by someone like the city to go ahead and do that. So, based on that, and based on all of the other paperwork, including the affidavit and the estimates, all appearing to be in order, I would avert to the committee, but I see no reason to deny this one.
Thank you. Other members of the committee, other members of the council, other members of the public. The only testimony I will add is, I'm going to agree with Councilman Ricks, because there was a conversation I had with the city clerk's office and then with the administration, and a member of the claimant's family did reach out to explain the SNAFU not to Thank you. Other members of the committee, other members of the council, other members of the public. The only testimony I will add is I'm going to agree with Councilman Ricks because there was a conversation I had with the City Clerk's office and then with the administration, and a member of the claimant's family did reach out to explain the SNAFU not directly with me. I, I feel the conversations were legit, and for that reason, I would be looking for a motion to approve. So we're at that stage. Do we have a motion? Councilman Ricks. Oh, I did, I asked.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Today's my 68th birthday. Did I forget to ask the public? I believe I did ask public. I'll do it again. Are there any members of the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action in the amount of $277.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The third claim in front of us tonight is for Cox Communicat- Cox Communication, and the recommendation is to deny, and the paperwork tells us that those wires were below required height. Do we have any comments from the committee? Yes. Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. I agree with the department on this one.
Any other members of the co-, our committee? Members of the council?
Just one thing.
Where?
Oh, I like how you looked.
Councilman Sanapi.
He thought I was above you? The only thing I'll add is that this is a common problem in parts of my ward, too, where their lines are too low and trucks take them down. So Cox deserves to foot the bill for their improper installation.
Thank you, sir. Any members of the public to speak on this claim? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Public Safety Committee. Am I missing something? Ah, back. I'm sorry. Put it in the bottom of the file. Here we are. I bet. Okay. I back, oh, so we need a motion for the consent calendar. Do we have a motion? Yeah, it's just like the bids. We have to pass the consent calendar, then we go to these two, I think.
I thought that that was covered because we did each three individually.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're on to PCR 4524. All right. That is Michelle Klasby claim. It was held. Do we have any new comments from the committee? New comments from the council? Is there anyone from the public to speak on this? None. So we have a motion to deny. Do we, is anyone making that motion? Do we have a motion? Councilman Ricks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second, PCR 45-24, Dan Corrigan claim, same thing. Any new information from the committee? Any new information from the council? Mr. Sanapi. Councilman Sanapi.
Can this please be held until the August meeting? The reason being is that they've obtained estimates that exceed the cutoff. They're not here in our information, but I've spoken with the claimant's family, and they're gonna attempt to go through the trust, and I'm requesting a hold just in case something short-circuits. That way, there's an option to come back.
Okay. Could you give me a date, please?
Sure. August 19th.
We have, we have a request for a motion to hold till August 19th. Do we have that motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Public Safety Committee is adjourned at 6:42.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next committee to me is the Intergovernmental Committee, and that can take place at this time.
I hate that. Shoot me my mic, I- Whatever it was. That shoe, fall. So where? Get him over here.
Have any?
Mr. Sanapi, is that? It's Sanapi.
I called him.
I thought he should have been.
No.
No. It is now 6:44, and the Intergovernmental Committee is now in session. The first order of business, acceptance of the minutes from the meeting on May 6th, 2024. Do I hear a motion? All in favor? The first item on the agenda is PCR-50-24, a resolution requesting the city solicitor review, evaluate, and remedy any claims presented to the City Council of Warwick regarding bid 2024-265. Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So I doctored this resolution as a result of a recent bid item that we had on the calendar for a pickup truck. And to take a look back, this was approved and ordered in July of 2023 for this new pickup truck with a plow for DPW. And in July, the order was for a 2024 pickup truck. National Auto Fleet Group was the successful bidder, and they bid $55,824, which the city accepted and acknowledged in good faith. The vehicle never came in, and the answer that the city was provided was, oh, we don't have a vehicle. We can't fill the request. Well, I'm sure most of us, or some of us, go by places like Tasker Ford and Flood Ford, and we can go on with the Ford dealers that have hundreds of pickup trucks on their lot. And what is particularly concerning is National Auto Fleet Group said, oh, but by the way, if you place an order for a 2025 in July or in June, we can get that truck for you, but it's gonna cost you more money. But we ended up having to go to Liberty Chevrolet and pay $60,402, which was almost $4,600 more than what National Auto Group bid, and which the city accepted, and the city placed the order in more than ample time. So for some reason, and you can draw your own conclusions, for some reason, National Auto Group decided that they could not provide us with the vehicle. While pickup trucks continued to fly off the lots, they continued to sell for more money, and we get whacked. We, the taxpayers, get whacked with an additional $4,600 for a new truck that should have been delivered to us as we agreed on. This isn't the first time that a vendor withdraws a bid for different reasons. We can't provide it, we can't get it, the number's wrong, and it seems as though this just goes on unchecked. This is something that, in my opinion, needs to start getting checked, and vendors need to be held to the task of providing us with what they make the commitment to. To just say, oh, we couldn't find a truck nine months later, nine months later, is ridiculous. And it's even more concerning if we just allow that type of activity to occur without the city solicitor exploring his or her legal avenues for holding these vendors, in this particular case, holding this vendor accountable for a commitment that they made to the city and for what seems like a pretty flimsy excuse that we didn't have a truck. And that's what I'm respectfully requesting the committee to view with favorable action and send it over to the city solicitor to explore options that will guide us in this particular issue, as well as giving us guidance going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
So, not a question, just a statement. Whenever, we've had this come before us a few times where there's been a attempt to, via resolution, instruct an employee and/or appointee of the mayor to engage in certain acts, and we traditionally voted them down on the, on the, a few reasons, one of which this not being the appropriate venue for that, but also we're, we're not the right party. We don't have no authority to pretend to be able to force or even strongly suggest. My own thoughts would be that, at least how I would normally handle this, and this isn't a dig on you, Councilman Lattiser, because this is just personal preference. I, I would go through our own solicitor and request, that's exactly what you did request, just privately, and then get feedback that way, just because from a legal perspective, this is not where we should be having this conversation, because if the city does have a claim, we're endangering it by having this discussion, especially when we're potentially laying out the merits of it and whatnot. So for, for those reasons and many more, I will vote no on this, but I, I don't disagree with Councilman Lattiser from the perspective of this vendor, based on the information available, left us holding the bag and cost us more money than we should have had to spend. I think, from what I understand, that sounds correct, and I wouldn't be surprised if remedies are sought. It'd be interesting to know if they are and if, how we normally handle this situation, whether or not there's a reputation issue, or if we avoid doing that, but I, that's not something I would be comfortable discussing here for the, the obvious reasons.
Any other comments from the committee? Comments from the council? Hearing none, there are a motion?
Second.
All in favor? The second item on the agenda is PCR 54-24, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to review and consider adopted provisions of the Rhode Island Civil Rights Enforcement Act. Councilman Sanapi?
So, many have no reason to even know about this, but the Rhode Island Supreme Court and the federal court have decided that the citizens of Rhode Island have no private right of action regarding the Rhode Island Constitution. It's not self-executing. Therefore, if your rights under the Rhode Island Constitution are violated, you cannot sue and remedy of that. And as someone who works in the law practice, often does civil rights, that was frequently a claim being made by our clients and many other people's clients. So this was an interesting thing to learn of. So all this proposed statute does is seek to give you the ability to enforce your rights, which you should have already had, and frankly, people thought they had up until recently. So it's nothing controversial or seeking to widen how much liability or anything. That's just something to resolve an issue that shouldn't have existed in the first place and was not intended to exist.
Any other comments from the committee? Comments from the council? Do I hear a motion? About the public? Any comments from the public? Do I hear a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
All in favor? It is now 6:54 PM, and the Intergovernmental Committee is now adjourned.
The next committee is Public Properties, and that can take place at this time. Then we will start the council meeting after this last committee.
See you later, sir. Yeah, your sister. Are you on the line?
I am.
Oh, me too. Oh, her.
It was like-
Your sister's a nice young lady.
Yes, she is.
I had to finish the thought. Anytime you're ready, I, oh, he is. Yes, sir, anytime you're ready.
The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use, and Community Affairs convenes at 6:55 PM. First up, acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on May 6th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Favorable action?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First item on the agenda, PCO-3-24, order on the abandonment of a portion of Lakedale Drive, Gary White and Jean E. White petitioner, Councilman Gebhardt, and this is for second passage.
So I'll reluctantly ask that the committee move favorable action on this. We had extensive, you want me to make the motion and then come back to me?
You can speak.
We had extensive debate and discussion on this the last time we were up. The city records show that there's a road going through the petitioner's home. The road very clearly does not go through the petitioner's home. The petitioner is simply looking to improve their property, to essentially build up over an existing garage, and the process they've had to go through is, you know, to have a survey, to hire an appraiser. They actually hired that appraiser, and then it turned out that the appraiser they hired was not on the certified list of appraisers, so they hired yet another appraiser. They got a fair market value appraisal for, for this piece of property, and, and now in order to move forward with their project, they are burdened with an additional $9,000 in cost on top of their project in order to, you know, abandon this portion of road, which appears to be where it belongs. However, our records show that the road is not, in fact, where the road should be. So this is probably a hundred-year-old issue. I had hoped to make an amendment to this. The first time we heard it, to adjust the amount of money that the petitioner would have to pay, I was informed by our legal counsel that that was not within the scope of our authority here on the city council, which is unfortunate, but I do plan to continue to try to find a amicable resolution for the petitioner. However, I do know that at this time, you know, despite the kind of bad taste in their mouth from the process, you know, they really do want to make the im-
However, I do know that at this time, you know, despite the kind of bad taste in their mouth from the process, you know, they really do want to make the improvements to their property. And so, as I said, I will reluctantly ask for second passage on this so that the resident can move forward with their project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, members of the committee? Comments, members of the council? Comments, members of the public? And as this is up for second passage, and we had the public hearing at the time of the first passage, I would be looking for a motion for favorable action.
Can I ask a, I'm sorry, can I ask a point of clarification to our solicitor? Am I correct, when we first passaged this, it was to deny? It was, it was in, it was favorable?
It was favorable as presented to the council, was the recommendation, and therefore it's here for second passage to make it final.
So moved, favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second on the agenda, also for second passage, we have PCO-4-24 sub A, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Warwick, 1009 Centerville LLC, applicant 1009 Centerville Road, assessors plat 241 lot 10, for recommendation, Councilman Sinapi.
Request favorable action.
Thank you. Comment, members of the committee? Comment, Councilman Sinapi or members of the council?
Just, just one, because it's, people are rightly confused. So, the current building that's in that parking lot now for the vet clinic, another of the leases is Shake Shack. If you are facing the building from Coesha's side, if you keep going left, that's where the new building is going to be that this concerns. So, it's a building that doesn't currently exist. It's not Shake Shack.
That's very good to hear. I know that when I saw something in the newspaper, or not the newspaper, but online news about, right over by that location, something about Shake Shack, that was a little confusing to me for a moment. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, since the last meeting on this, I had taken an opportunity to revisit that site and try to get a clearer understanding of the location of the building, the proximity, and particularly important to me was how this traffic was going to flow in and out. In addition to that revisit of the site and having a conversation with Councilman Sinapi in clearing up the traffic flow, I will be voting in favor of this on second passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, members of the council? Any comment, members of the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Favorable action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Last on the agenda, item 3, PCR-40-24, a resolution in observance of Pride Month. So, I'll speak briefly. I think that this is important for us as a city to recognize and to commemorate Pride Month. The resolution itself goes into a lot more detail as to the reasons why, but with that said, comment, members of this committee? Comment, members of the council? Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I thank you for docketing this, and I support this as well, and I do want to make mention that we did hear from the Warwick LGBTQ+ Pride Committee, who is also in support of this as well. I don't know if anyone is here from that organization this evening, but they did send a nice note thanking us for bringing this forward this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And if any members of-
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Absolutely. Let's see, and if I'm looking down the list, yeah, I think that makes just about everyone a co-sponsor on this resolution. Let's see, if any members of the public wish to speak on this resolution, they may, of course, step forward. Comment, members of the public on PCR 40-24, a resolution in observance of Pride Month? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion for favorable action.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further business of this committee, the committee adjourns at 7:04 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will start the council meeting in a few minutes. Our guests have just arrived, and I'm just gonna give the clerk and the council people a couple of minutes to get ready. Thank you. I call the June 3, 2024 City Council Meeting Order. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mr. Foley. Mr. Gebhardt. Mr. Howe.
Here.
Mr. Lattiser.
Here.
Mr. Mackler.
Here.
Mr. Rick.
Here.
Mr. Sinapi. Ms. Travis.
Yeah.
Nine present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Travis, will you please introduce our guests this evening that are going to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, we have the Warwick Police Explorers, also known as the Cadets, are here, and Officer Ryan Shuffley is the leader, and he's gonna lead, they're all gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then he'll explain a little bit about it. Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars threw the marrowless spire? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the boughs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Councilwoman Travis.
Thank you. We're gonna have Officer Ryan Shuffley, he's gonna explain a little of the program that the Cadets do, and I know he has Officer Jim around, yeah, here, so you can do it now.
Well, number one, thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. The last time I was at the podium in here, I think I had to answer for a municipal ticket that I got driving myself. Just kidding, just a joke. We like to joke around about here, but thank you very much for having us here tonight. I've been the director of the Explorer Program for, this is my second season. This is actually our last class tonight before we graduate next Monday, and the Cadets, the Explorers behind me have their physical training test out later tonight at Norwood Boys and Girls Club, so this is the easy part for them tonight. But our program, we meet every Monday night, end of September to middle of June. Everything about police work, every aspect of police work, we teach them. We have people all the way from captains down to an officer who's been here maybe one year, that all take turns teaching every element of police work you can imagine, from motor vehicle traffic stops, dealing with domestic violence, building clearing and room searching. This year, we've had a really great class. We've even had them out on the Marine Patrol boats with the WPD Marine Patrol a couple weeks ago, which was awesome. We've taken a field trip to the American Heritage Museum, which is all about the U.S. military history, and we even, this past weekend, got to take them to the WPD range and have them safely fire a couple different types of rifles. These are all new things that we didn't do last year either, so it's been a really great program, and I'm very happy to be a part of it and to lead it for however many years. We'll see. But at this point, I'm going to allow each one of them to just come up, they're gonna state their name, their age, how long they've been in the program, and one of their favorite things about the program, and then we'll be on our way and allow you to, you know, carry on with your meeting. Thank you very much for having us here.
Good afternoon, council people. My name is Alex Metta. This is my fifth year in the Warwick Police Explorers. I'm the class leader or class lieutenant. The best part about the Explorer Program is the opportunity for me to lead these fabulous young men and women into the next stages of their life. Right now, I'm a college student. Most of them are in high school, soon to going into college. I have the ability to mentor them, help them through their time, and share some of my experience. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Good evening, council. I'm Charlotte Walker. I've, I am 17 years old. I've been in the Explorer Program for three years now. I am the class sergeant, and one of my favorite things, one of our favorite classes at the Explorers is going on the Marine boats, seeing all the navigation systems and how they patrol our waters.
Good evening, council people. I am Matt Hion. I am, I am 17 years old. I've been an explorer for 17 years, no, three years, three years. I'm 17 years old. One thing I did like about this program, I was shooting rifles at the Warwick Shooting Range. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Norton. I am 20 years old. I've been an explorer for two years, and one of my favorite parts about the Explorer Program is working together with my team. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is William Gabriel. I'm 16 years old, and my favorite thing about the Warwick Explorer Program is doing the rifle shooting. Thank you, that's all.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Montoya. I'm 16 years old. I've been an explorer for one year now, and I have to say, my favorite part about the program was the live fire that we got to participate in over the weekend. Thank you for having us.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh Gabriel. This is my first year. My favorite thing about the Explorers is the Marine Patrol.
Good evening. My name is Elias Laporte. I'm 16 years old. This is my first year in the Explorer Program, and with many more to come. My personal favorite thing about the Explorers is firsthand experience in law enforcement and being able to do something I want to, I'm very passionate about doing in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Zachary St. Hours. I am 15, and my favorite part about this program is all the events we get to take part in, such as the Marching of the Gatsby Day Parade and the Rocky Point Events. Thank you.
And once again, we just wanted to say thank you very much for having us here. This was a unique opportunity and very cool, and it's always great to have them do a little more public speaking, so thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you very much, guys. We'll see you Saturday at the parade. Next up is General Communications. This is the announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events. First up, I'd like to congratulate and wish our colleague, Bill Foley, a happy birthday. He is working on his birthday this evening, so happy birthday. I also would like to congratulate and thank our Sergeant of Arms, Paul Wells. Paul has been a volunteer Sergeant of Arms for the City Council for the past three years. He has a new position, his kids are getting older, and softball is active, and so he's unable to continue serving with us, but I just want to thank him. He stepped up, again, he volunteered his time, he attended every council meeting he could, special meetings he was here, contract meetings he was here, and he was a great presence here, helping residents that, a lot of times, it's the first time that they're at a council meeting, we were able to say, go see Paul, he'll be able to answer any questions you have, and he really did a great job, and he's served our city. He's retired Warwick Police Officer as well, retired from the Warwick Police Department and continued to serve here. So, I just want to thank Paul for his three years of service to the City Council, and so we are looking for a new Sergeant of Arms. If anyone is interested, please reach out to their councilperson, and we'd also love to get some students involved as well. Leah just left, too bad, I should have plugged it while she was here on the school committee. We'd love to get some, the students to get involved and see what we do here on the City Council. Any other members of the council like to speak on general communications, announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilwoman Travis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like, gonna do a moment of silence, but to talk about Leah. Leah and I both serve on the Board of Directors for the Cadets, so we see all the good things they do. But for a moment of silence, I'd like to have it for Mark Constantine. He's, you know, a well-known family, you know, Walter was the school committee chairman, I believe, but he just passed away recently, I believe the week's tomorrow. He was 65. It's sad.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other general communications, members of the council? Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could request that my colleagues in this council and the members, kind of a, kind of as a history buff, but also, you know, someone who understands the challenges to become the country we are, June 6, in three days, we will mark the 80th, which is amazing when you think of it, the 80th anniversary of the invasion of Nazi occupied Europe, and, you know, looking back at the changes and, you know, the sacrifice that was made on that as we moved, that's quite a milestone, and the fact that there are many Americans, there are over 100,000 World War II veterans still alive. I do respectfully request a moment of silence as we honor and remember the, and the 80th anniversary of D-Day.
Thank you, Councilman Howe. Thank you. Any other council members on general communications? Okay, next up on the agenda is Executive Communications, there are none, so we move to A, which is the acceptance of the minutes from the council meeting held on May 6. Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Next up is the announcements of appointments, there are none. Number two is appointments requiring confirmation, there are none, so we now are on number three, which is a consent calendar. First up is PCR 52-24, Resolution Relative to Bids, Committee Report, Councilman Howe.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Bid 2024-418, 2023-427, 2024-470, 2024-471, 2025-053, 2022-021, 2024-
2024-427, 2024-130, 2025-032, 2024-292, 2025-031, 2025-033, 2025-028, 2024-474, 2024-480, 2024-439, 2024-436, 2024-467, 2024-469, 2025-034, 2025-045, 2024-446, 2025-048, 2024-450, 2025-051, 2024-210, 2024-454, 2024-479, 2024-478, 2023-012, 2024-298, and 2024-440.
Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments on the bid package? Yeah, the bid package that was not discussed earlier this evening? Okay, number two is PCR-53-24 Resolution Relative to Claims Committee Report. Councilman Foley. For action, Councilman Foley.
Thank you. We have three bids.
You just gotta move it again and we'll get a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Rix and Councilman McElroy. Go ahead, Councilman Foley.
Thank you.
First one is PCR-53-24. Sofia DeLuca, the recommendation is to approve in the amount of $209.61. Second is Roberta Farias. Recommendation is to approve in the amount of $277. And the third, Cox Communication, and the recommendation is to deny.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions that were not asked earlier this evening in the Public Safety Committee? Okay, so the consent calendar has been moved in second. Is there any additional questions or comments on the consent calendar as a whole? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt. Mr. Howe. Mr. Lattiser. Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Nine yes, consent passes.
Thanks. Consent calendar passes. I believe one item has been removed from the consent calendar. Councilman Howe.
Yes, Mr. President. Bid 2024-341 Traffic Safety Camera Program has a PCR of PCR-55-2020 and that was recommended to hold till June 17, 2024.
It's PCR-55-24, correct?
Yes, Mr. President. I apologize.
Okay, hold to June 17. We're now moving to unfinished business on the council. First up is PCO-3-24 Committee Report. Lenius.
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gephardt.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action for second passage.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you. Second passage passes. Number two this evening is PCO-4-24 Sub A Committee Report. Lenius.
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Snappy. Second by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action for second passage.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you. Second passes passes. Number three this evening is PCR-45-24 Committee Report. Public Safety.
Recommend favorable action to deny.
For action, recommended favorable action to deny. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman McElroy. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in Public Safety Committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action to deny.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt. Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix. Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Nine yes to deny.
Thank you. Number four this evening is PCR-46-24 Committee Report. Public Safety.
Motion to hold till 8/19.
Hold to August 19. We're now moving on to new business. First up is PCR-37-24 Committee Report. Finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on PCR-37-24 that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
No.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
No.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
No.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Six yes, three no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number two this evening, PCR-38-24 Committee Report. Finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on PCR-38-24? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
No.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
No.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
No.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Six yes, three no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number three this evening is PCR-39-24 Committee Report. Finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Questions or comments on PCR-39-24? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
No.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
No.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
No.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Six yes, three no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number four this evening is PCR-40-24 Committee Report. Community Affairs.
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Rix.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. And I believe Councilman Lattiser is asked to be added as a co-sponsor on this. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number five this evening is PCR-50-24 Committee Report. Intergovernmental.
Committee votes to deny.
Okay, Councilman McElroy, make the motion.
I move to deny.
Second by, so unfavorable action. Second by Councilman Foley. Questions or comments from members of the committee, I mean, from members of the council on PCR-50-24?
I've already said what I had to say, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lattiser. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so it's been moved in second, so for unfavorable action, the clerk will call a roll.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
No.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
No.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Seven yes to no motion. Passes as unfavorable.
Unfavorable, thank you. Number six this evening is PCR-54-24 Committee Report. Intergovernmental.
Favorable, Mr. President.
For action, Councilman Snappy. Second by Councilman Foley and Councilwoman Travis. Any questions or comments on this one that were not asked earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix. Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Ward one, anything to docket under unanimous consent?
Pass.
Ward two.
Pass.
Ward three.
Pass.
Ward four.
Pass.
Ward five.
Pass.
Ward six.
Pass.
Ward seven passes. Ward eight.
Pass.
Ward nine.
Pass.
Thank you. Councilwoman Travis.
If there be no further business of this honorable body, I move to a docket session.
All those in favor of moving to docket session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? We are now in the docket session.
You missed it.
Yes, I have one.
You missed it.
Surprise.
A resolution relative to claim of op.
Ward one to docket. What do you have?
I'm sorry. Resolution relative to the claim of op.
Public safety.
Thank you.
Ward two, anything to docket?
Yes.